All right, we're gonna open up this formal session on June 26 at 10 a.m. Ken, you wanna leave us in the flex loop?
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Item C is our calendar session. Is there any changes that need to be made? We do have, I don't know if it made it on there or not, I didn't look at it, but July 2 for the Legislative, St. Paul Rodeo Legislative Days. IMD's public comment, I have a few cards filled out. If anybody else wants to make a public comment, you can fill out the tan cards. If you're here for the public hearing and you wanna make public comment, fill out the green cards. Which brings us up to our first one for general comment is going to be Delinda, if you could come on up. State your name and address, please. Yep, absolutely.
Good morning. My name is Delinda Morgan and I live at 23918 Northeast Spring Hill Road, Gaston 97119. And please forgive me if I get emotional. The first time I tell this story, it hurts me because I relive it. But the three things that our water company did that was wrong is they put a meter or a shut-off valve to my home a quarter mile away from me. And I came in and talked to Commissioner Bershauer and she went to a board meeting for the co-op and they didn't let her have any answers. But then when they visited her at her office, they told her that in freezing temperatures, I could just hook up a garden hose to a meter. They installed an asbestos concrete, which is illegal. My two-inch connection is on plans and I have the original blueprints that shows the line went up to the first house, came across the driveway, went up to my house, 1,300 feet for me to get domestic water. What they did is this first meter, they gave them a new line, so they broke my line where their meter was connected and put two temporary flange. Then they came up and broke it with the backhoe again to give them a new line. Their line was north of me. They should've just built it around my two-inch line. That's the only connection that was on the plans for the job. I have those and I'm going to email the commissioners under BOC info and send those plans and those pages that I printed out because I wanted to make sure if you wanted to write notes or put something on there. But my line is very, very protected. It's the donation land claim number 57. It paid for the three meters to come out there. It was the first meter, the second meter, then it went across my pasture and exited in the third leased house. These two houses were leased when those were put in, 1967. They didn't sell the property till 1972, five years after the water line was put in. What they did is they broke it at the third house also so that I couldn't get water coming in from the exit. They did this because they want me to hook up whatever I want to, to build my own line and they don't shut, there is not one other house that shut off a quarter mile away from their home. So I've been to many agencies, government agencies, that, and my state representative is also informed, Representative Lucetta Elmer, and she has the whole package and she wants to be copied on everybody that I send because now I'm working with the health departments, the water resource department. I went and got other history from Water Resources yesterday. The EPA, Secretary of Health and Human Services, I'm writing everyone because it's a health problem. It's against the law what they did. They're not allowed. They're supposed to give you water to your meter. There's a shut-off on the meter. If somebody doesn't pay their bill, they can shut the meter off. They're not supposed to put a shut-off valve for one house that was the original senior user a quarter mile away. Water law reads on the front page, Oregon Water Law, I put it in there. The senior user gets water first. In any times of low water, no water in it, the senior user, that's me. I'm the only one that they cut off. What I'm doing is protecting my property. I love it. I've been there 33 years and the original lady that installed the entire line from Laurelwood Academy to these, the donation land claim was Joyce Cushman. And everyone from 1967 till I bought it on the courthouse steps, 1992, didn't own the house. They took out a loan. So the meter was always in Mrs. Cushman's name. When I moved in, because I bought the house on the courthouse steps, sheriff, it was a sheriff's auction, VA sale. I offered a dollar more than was owed to the VA and they sold us the house. It needed a new roof. There was leaks all over and a new basement. You could reach out and touch the dirt. There was holes. The house was falling down. So we spent every penny we had to jack the house up, replace the basement walls, replace the roof. I love that place. It was ignored and we took care of it. So my water bill went back to 1977 because all those renters and everyone that didn't pay their bill, I had to pay it off because I owned the house and that's the only way I could get water. I've done everything right to try not to cause any harm or money for anyone else. There's a lot of people that live in this co-op that are my friends. And if I do anything to cost them more money, thank you. It would, it would not be right. So they hired lawyers to write me really terrible letters about putting my own line in and things like this. And everyone says sue them, sue them. And I say, I can't, not with a good conscience. If it ends up costing $500,000, that's what everybody in the co-op has to pay because they can hire lawyers and do everything and use our money. When we first moved there, it was 1992 and our water bill was about 20 bucks a month for five people. I have three sons. It went, it was eight dollars a month base fee. Now it's $50 a month base fee. So a minimum of $40,000 a month they get on base fee. When I moved in, there was two people, a lady that worked four hours in the office, four days a week, did all the paperwork. Malcolm Marino was the contractor builder. He built the system. Eight dollars a month. Now they've got a fleet of vehicles, a bunch of people working in the field, breaking things. And we're not getting any more out of it. We're not improving our system. The three things that are wrong besides cutting my line off a quarter mile away is there was a tap pipe there. I live on the valley floor. It was to purge the system in case of any contamination. They took it out and put my shut-off valve there. So now if the system were to get contaminated, we don't have any way to purge it. And that includes Gaston Water, LA Water Users. It includes everyone that's in the system. And there were other things they did wrong too. When they did the two little plugs, it was on the existing asbestos concrete. It's illegal to tap into asbestos concrete. And the neighbors, the Coopers, wrote something that says, give me a new line, blah, blah, blah. I'm requesting a new line. And do not put Lance and Delinda's Morgan's line in our ditch. That's in there too. It's not right. You cannot take an irrevocable easement and let a neighbor say, get their water line off my property. It's not the way that it's supposed to work. Everything is irrevocable. They can come onto the property at any time. It's in their minutes. So I put that in there. The reason I went to Water Resources also is my home has water rights. Donation land claim 57 has water rights, which are very difficult to get. And when I was there yesterday, she said, you have industrial water rights, which is almost impossible to get. But it's to the home. It's to the property. It's not to us. We own it right now, but if we sell it, all those rights stay with the property. When I purchased it in full and paid for it and owned it in 1992, all those rights belonged to the property, not me. And Mrs. Cushman told me that. Malcolm Marino, the builder, told me that. And Ken Cooper, who was the parent to the people living in there now, also told me that. So what I would like the commissioners, if they can, to look at is in planning and development, they told me that no one can move a meter unless they have written permission from the owner. I never gave written permission. There's not a meter at the road, just a shut-off valve. They can't single me out. I'm supposed to be treated like everyone else, not separate. That's, you know, besides that, I think every, if you have any questions.
This is a lot to digest and the other commissioners don't have what you handed me, so definitely follow up. Send us all an email and then we'll do what we can and go through all the information.
I will. I'll send, I go to Oregon Stationery because we don't have high-speed internet there either. So I go to Oregon Stationers and then she sends it out because for some reason she can't send it to me and I can't forward it from my phone because it's too big of a file.
Is it more than just what's here? Because we can actually scan this and just send it.
It's those papers are in there. A letter to you that's on top is in there. But there's two other files and one of them is a file of the original blueprint of how the original line went.
Okay, so send whatever I don't have here. Go ahead and email. I don't want it to cost you extra for no reason. We can scan this and put it into, it's gotta go public record anyway, so.
She, she already has the packet. She sent it to eight different people, including Hillsborough Water, Joyce Water Commission. You know, everyone that's involved that I have spoken to is going from, so I don't have control. She's gonna send that out anyway.
Sure, okay, that's fine. Yep, that's fine. Just trying, if there was cost involved, just trying to save you.
Do you wanna follow up both for being planning or who wants to take?
I think we need to look at the stuff first and then.
Thank you very much. No, you're fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comments on a non-agenda item? Raise your hand or if you're online, raise your virtual hand. Seeing none. Moving on. E is department updates. There is none. F is work session. There is none. G is consent agenda. We do have comment on one item in the consent agenda and it is G5. So I'm gonna ask Jerry to come on up. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. I'm Dr. Jerry Turgerson. My address is 912 East Third Street in Newburgh. It's so lovely to see all of you today. Thank you for having me. I am here in my role as the psychologist supporting the Newburgh Dundee Public School School-Based Health Center. And we noticed that there was the continuation of funding for the collaboration between the School-Based Health Center and Health and Human Services on the consent agenda today. And just wanted to come and say thank you for your ongoing support of the work happening at the Newburgh School-Based Health Center. It really is an honor to be here before you today and share a little bit of the wonderful work that's taking place at our School-Based Health Center. It really is an incredible and unique structure to have such community-level support and engagement. We have a wonderful partnership between Yenhill County Health and Human Services, Lutheran Community Services, Providence Medical Group, the school district, and then backing and support from groups such as yourself here at the Board of Commission and the Austin Family Foundation. Throughout the last year at the School-Based Health Center, we have provided 4,781 behavioral health visits focused on suicidality, depression, anxiety, trauma, substance use, and eating disorders for youth and adolescents between the age of five and 21 and have also provided some acute crisis mental health support services for district staff. We have provided over 150 hours of academic assessment. That's not included in those visits that I just noted. Specifically partnering with our district's school psychologists to help identify kiddos who may have learning disabilities or be in need of specialized instructional support through the school district. We've provided 272 families with intensive case management support and spent over $21,000 in stabilization services. So things like paying for utilities, paying for rents to help prevent evictions for families, student needs, so things like providing cleats for kids who wanna play a sport but the family can't afford to provide the, the tools or the equipment that they might need to participate in a school-based resource. We also provided holiday boxes and Christmas presents for multiple families as part of that funding. And then we also provided 828 medical appointments for things like well child checks, sports, physicals, flus, fevers, headaches, similar preventative health-related appointments. With the service provision we have, we're really proud of the community partnerships, the collaboration, and the significant level of parental engagement that we're able to maintain through our work at the School-Based Health Center. This programming is really an incredible support to our youth, our families, and our community. And we're so grateful for the ongoing support that you all have here at the Board of Commission. And so just wanted to take a moment to say thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Dr.
Thank you, Jerry. So still up is G, our consent agenda. I would move approval. Is there any further discussion?
None.
None.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Up next is H, old business. There is none. I is other business. I1 is consideration of approval of a blanket refund order authorizing the tax collector to issue lawful refunds to taxpayers effective July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026. I would move approval. Is there any further discussion?
None.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item I2 is consideration of approval of a grant agreement number 250-252-YAMHILL-000 between Yenhill County and the Oregon State Marine Board in the amount of $87,654 effective July 1, 2025 through July 30, 2027. I would move approval. Is there any further discussion?
None.
Is this the number that is reflective of the cut that we got? Yeah, I'm seeing a nod. Yes, okay. Thank you. That was 30%? That's all I have.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item I3. Consideration approval to submit a 5339B grant application to Oregon Department of Transportation, ODOT, for federal transit administration funds in the amount of $22,260,000 with a 15% match.
I would move approval.
Motion's been made. Any further discussion?
None.
None. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item I4 is consideration approval amendment number one to the agreement between Yenhill County and George Fox University Board Order 24-099, amending contract language and extending the term to December 31, 2026. Joya's here. If you guys have any questions.
This is just the last bit of the ARPA funds, right?
This is just a, why don't you just give us a quick little snippet, Joya, if you would?
So this is actually, we had, the county had given George Fox $500,000 back last year. And they came back to us with a request to change the location. So it was going to be on the George Fox campus and now they have moved the location to Northwest Christian Church. They are in, under an agreement for that, for that property and the program to be placed there. So this is changing that. And then it's also changing the ending date to December 31, 2026, which is the last day that dollars need to be committed and spent and be done with. And they have assured me that it will be done by then. So.
I would move approval.
Motion's been made. Any further discussion? I do have one comment to make. When this change did come about, there's a lot more to it. It brought the total cost of the project down when they brought on the church to, from 12 million to 7 million. So this is a huge deal for this. So I just wanna make that comment. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
I just wanna mention, it's two, two years today.
Today's my two-year anniversary, yes.
That are.
For two years.
Economic Development Manager has been here. It's been a, just a pleasure to be able to sort of hand off some of the more complicated things. And though you've got, last night we were at an event and I was counting the number of people who are coming up and in the community, thanking you for the handoff and the recommendations and the referrals. And so it's been great to have you here and we've appreciated you and thank you.
It has been truly an honor and a pleasure to work here in this community, to work for you and to especially work with our business community because I have a great passion for that. So thank you. It truly has been a lot of fun and I've learned a lot. It's been a great opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Joya.
Thank you, Joya.
Thanks.
Item I5 is consideration of approval of a service element prior authorization, number 123372194, in the amount of $4,000 under the agreement between Yenhill County Health and Human Services and the Department of Human Services for the financing of the Yenhill County Community Developmental Disabilities Program.
This is a pass-through fund, so I would move approval.
Motion's been made. Any further discussion?
None.
None. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item I6, consideration of approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Yenhill County Public Health and the Multnomah Education Service District for Medicaid administrative claims processing services in the quarterly amount of $16,762.84 effective July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026.
So they, they do process our Medicaid claims and that's in line with the contract we have with OHA. So I would move approval.
Motion's been made. Any further discussion? None. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item I7 is consideration of approval amendment number 10 to the agreement number 026028, Board Order 24-029, between Yenhill County Health and Human Services and the Oregon Health Authority, increasing funding in the amount of $4,705 retroactive to July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025.
I would move approval.
Motion's been made. Any further discussion?
None for me.
None. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Can I just add one note?
Yeah.
This is very, this is separate and distinct and I wanna call out, this is not part of the contracts that the majority of the Oregon counties are pushing back against OHA. That's a whole separate deal. So this is something we're continuing to push back on signing those behavioral health contracts. So just wanted to put your minds at ease. We're, we're still holding firm on that.
Thank you for that. And as a follow-up, I7 did pass unanimously. Thank you. I8, consideration of approval of an agreement between Yenhill County Health and Human Services and Insoph tech Inc. for an electronic health record, EHR, system and implementation in the not-to-exceed amount of $6,740,260.90 effective upon full execution through June 30, 2023.
We needed to get a whole new system.
2030.
And this is, this goes beyond 2030, correct, Ken? Or, okay.
I would move approval.
Okay, good. All those, any further discussion?
No, thank you.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item I9, consideration of approval of amendment number three to the agreement between Yenhill County Health and Human Services and Coal Collaborative Therapeutic Solutions LLC, amending the hours of service language effective July 9, 2025.
I'd move approval.
Motion's been made. Any further discussion?
None.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item I10, consideration of approval to submit a letter in opposition of the Oregon Department of Transportation's proposed tax increases brought to us by Commissioner Sterrett.
My understanding is there was a new amendment, 156-page amendment, which was, was sent out last night. There's going to be a hearing tomorrow at 3:30. Hopefully people will push back on this. This is gonna be an absolutely enormous tax to our constituents. Gas tax will be up 12 cents, one of the highest in the nation. 350% increase on car sale taxes, triple the tax on our paycheck for the transit taxes. And again, we start not seeing anything in this bill that addresses ODOT accountability. So hopefully, because now they're saying it's not gonna be 15 billion, it's only gonna be 11.7 billion in new taxes. But it still is every time you buy and sell a car, registrations, you know, just what's, what's going on with gases. So this is, this is gas taxes. This is a letter that the board, I'm hoping that we have unanimous approval of this letter to send it into our House of Representatives, the entire body, and say that this will be the largest tax hike in Oregon history. So I am asking, if you've had the opportunity to read this letter, we pull no punches and I hope that you will agree with me that this needs to happen.
I agree.
I agree. I move approval.
All right. Motion's been made. Any further discussion?
None.
None.
None. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. And thank you for putting that together. We have an add-on is I11 and this is approval of a 10% increase to the base salary of the county administrator position. I would make a motion to approve. Any further discussion?
No, I just wanna say that Ken works really hard and he has, you know, he's sort of taken it on the chin for all of us, spent an awful lot of time. of taken it on the chin for all of us, spent an awful lot of time in the office, at the expense of his family and his health, and, you know, just, I think it's a, it hasn't happened. We haven't had any, any-
We're not saying that you're not healthy, though.
He's falling apart over there.
Falling apart over there.
The wheels are coming off this guy. We figured we'd give him a raise. Anyway, I just, I just wanted to add that. I think we all-
I think you speak for all of us. We definitely appreciate, and we see the extra time and effort that you put in to that position, and it is very much appreciated.
Move approval?
Move approval. Any further discussion? And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Which brings us to J, public hearings. Grab my notes for that. Is Ken Friday online with us? Okay. So, I'm going to open up this public hearing at 10:28 a.m. I'm going to call for any abstentions by members of the board.
I have none.
None? Ask, let's see, is there any objections to the jurisdiction of the board to hear the matters before us? Anybody online or in the audience? Hearing none, and seeing none. Does any board member need to announce and state on the record the substance of any ex parte contact or any onsite visits?
None.
None.
None? Okay.
Other than driving by a-
Driving by.
Billion times.
I, I will say, just for the record, when I, I think when I was on the planning commission, this may have been before us on a separate matter. I think it was a rezoning. 10:35, and we're on the reading of statements required by state law, which is why Ken's So, just for the record. here, so thank you.
Oregon law requires that persons who attend a land use hearing be advised of certain
And then we'll pass it off to Ken Friday to read in the statements required by law.
rights and duties before the hearing begins. First, ORS 197.797 requires that we list the applicable substantive criteria that must We may want to, if it's okay with the chair, maybe we recess for five minutes-
Okay.
Find out, because it's possible that Ken was logged in to monitor when the hearing be met in order for the county to approve an application. would come in, because we had a pretty lengthy agenda. The standards will be listed by a county planner in a moment as part of the staff report.
And then walk over.
And he's probably on his way here.
Okay, got it.
So-
All right, let's take a five-minute recess while we wait for Ken Friday.
Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards the standards for approval. Yeah. Second, the raise it or waive it rule. Under Oregon law, any issue that might be raised in an appeal of the county's decision in this matter must be raised before the record of this hearing is closed. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-makers and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the board based on that issue. Third, and this is directed to the applicant, under ORS 197.796, failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval, again with sufficient specificity to allow the county to respond to the issue, precludes an action for damages in circuit court.
Thank you. And we are on to... Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Lance.
The applicable approval criteria and standards include Section 702.07 of the Yamhill County zoning ordinance, the Yamhill County Land Division ordinance, and comprehensive plan policies may also be applicable. The subject parcel is located in a light industrial zone and is currently undeveloped, although there are reports of concrete and asphalt having been left on the property. The request is for a nine-lot subdivision identified as Lone Oak Road, with eight of those lots being developable to light industrial uses, and the ninth lot being set aside for use for the septic drain field location for each of those lots. The subdivision was approved by the Planning Commission unanimously on June 5. The proposed lots range in size from approximately 0.55 acres to 1.1, 1.81 acres, with an average lot size of approximately one acre. Access to the proposed new parcels will be provided by Lone Oak Road, with three easement drives being proposed to provide ingress egress to the six subdivision lots who do not have direct access to Lone Oak Road. The surrounding area is a nexus of various zoning designations and land use patterns. Neighboring parcels to the north and east are zoned for very low-density residential. These VLDR zone lots are all dedicated to rural residential use, with single-family dwellings and accessory buildings commonly found on these properties. One of these VLDR zoned parcels, Tax Lot 4411905, received approval for the operation of a mini storage facility as a home occupation. There are two light industrial parcels east of the applicant's tract. These parcels do not currently have land use approval for any light industrial uses, though. The tract to the west and north of the subject property hosts Evergreen Memorial Park, which is zoned for public assembly and institutional use, and is 109 acres in size. There are four parcels to the south and southwest of the subject tract, and these lots are zoned for neighborhood commercial use. One of these lots is Bun's Village, and land use on this property runs the gamut of uses permitted in the neighborhood commercial zone. Another one of these neighborhood commercial zone lots hosts a furniture retail business with five structures located on the property. The remaining two parcels zoned for neighborhood commercial use are used as a car dealership. Further to the north of the subject tract, towards the end of northeast Lone Oak Road, the land is zoned for exclusive farm use, and the predominant land use pattern is farming. Farm use in the surrounding area includes grass seed and hay production, hazelnut orchards, and nursery stock, and that concludes the staff report.
Thank you. That brings us to the applicant's case. Good morning and welcome.
Thank you.
Name an address, please.
Thank you, Chair Johnston, and Commissioner King and Starlet. My name's Chris Goodell. I'm with AKS Engineering. Our address is 12965 Southwest Herman Road, Twelton, Oregon 97062, working here for the property owner and applicant. Thank you, Lance, for the staff report. We appreciate it. As Lance said, this is an application for a dividing industrial land, light industrial land, so it's subdivided. It's a, the net result would be underground utilities and three shared paved driveways and drainage systems. Everything's, you know, there's no buildings included, there's no different uses of land, nothing would be authorized other than the subdivision with this application. All those things that people might think would come in the future, buildings and parking areas and landscaping and whatnot, all those would be subject to the county's site design review process in the future, when somebody knew exactly what they wanted to build. But at that point, at this point, none of that is, is on the table. Just a bit of background, this, this application was processed through a robust planning process with an exceptional amount of public participation, including an initial written comment period, a public hearing before the Planning Commission, an extensive open record period with a comment period, and, and then a continued public meeting with the Planning Commission. The applicant during this time worked diligently with county staff, provided additional information and evidence, and even updated the application to be responsive to the, the comments that were received during this time period. In the end, county staff found that the subdivision application met all the applicable approval criteria and recommended approval to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission agreed with county staff and approved the application unanimously. To the extent there was concerns about things that could happen in the future, the county staff put guard, and the Plan Commission put guardrails on the application with, in the form of conditions of approval that come along with the approval of the application. The appeal grounds primarily involve stormwater. There's already expert testimony in the record prepared by a registered civil engineer in the form of a drainage plan, in the form of a memo describing how stormwater management will be handled. In addition, there's a condition of approval requiring that a final plan be prepared by a civil engineer and submitted for approval and review and approval by the County Public Works Director. So, that's how that is satisfied. So... This evidence is all what was relied upon in the Planning Commission's approval of the subdivision. The applicant requests that you also reply, rely upon this evidence in the record and reapprove, reapprove the application dismissing the appeal. That's the end of my testimony. I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have at this time, and I'd like to reserve the right to respond to any additional testimony received here today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
I don't have any.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Is there any testimony in support of the application? If you're online, raise your hand. Seeing none. Now, we'll go to the appellant's case. Is there anybody here representing as the appellant? Come on up. Name an address, please. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. Good morning. My name's Corey Rich, and address is 924 Southwest Fellow Street here in McMinnville. It's Steve Macy. We're representing Evergreen Memorial Park, and we have appealed the Planning Commission's decision for this development. Main reasons, as were stated before, is, has to do with the, the drainage. I understand that the approval is they're going to have to submit a drainage plan showing that no natural drainage is disturbed by the development. We believe that the natural drainage is already disturbed by the development through the artificial elevation of the property, and then when they pave this over, that water's going to run right into our cemetery. I brought a few pictures in that we had presented to the Planning Commission. Do you want to take these? Just made two copies of them showing the plotted cemetery. Steve will bring those up. The, the cemetery map shows the plotted cemetery. Then there's an aerial picture that shows where that plotted cemetery is showing. In the upper right-hand corner of that cemetery plot map, you can see where the county commissioner signed off on the cemetery in 1937. It is not farmland. It's actually plotted cemetery. You can see in the aerial photo also, the cemetery, as is plotted right now, is almost full. We have maybe four years left of burials before we will be burying in the plotted cemetery that is right where the water is going to drain off of the applicant's property. The 13 acres property that's going to be developed, on an average year, McMinnville gets 37 inches of rain. That 37 inches over 13 acres is over 13 million gallons of water. I submitted paperwork for a rainfall calculator before, the same website I got that from, Natural Land 50-
Working here for the property owner and applicant. Thank you, Lance, for the staff report. We appreciate it. As Lance said, this is an application for a dividing industrial land, light industrial land, so it's subdivided. It's a. The net result would be underground utilities and three shared paved driveways and drainage systems. Everything's, you know, there's no. Buildings included, there's. No different uses of land, nothing would be authorized other than the subdivision with this application. All those things that people might think would come in the future, buildings and parking areas and landscaping and whatnot. All those would be subject to the county site design review process in the future when somebody knew exactly what they wanted to build. But at that point, at this point, none of that is is on the table. Just a bit of background, this this application was processed through a robust planning process with an exceptional amount of public participation, including an initial written comment period, a public hearing before the planning commission, an extensive open record period with a comment period and and then a continued public meeting with the planning commission. The applicant during this time worked diligently with county staff, provided additional information and evidence, and even updated the application to be responsive to the comments that were received during this time period. In the end, county staff found that the subdivision application met all the applicable approval criteria and recommended approval to the planning commission. The planning commission agreed with county staff and approved the application unanimously. To the extent there was concerns about. Things that could happen in the future, the county staff put guard and the planning commission put guardrails on the application with in the form of conditions of approval that come along with the approval of the application. The appeal grounds primarily involve stormwater. There's already expert testimony in the record prepared by a registered civil engineer in the form of a drainage plan in the form of a memo describing how stormwater management will be handled. In addition, there's a condition of approval requiring that. A final plan be prepared by a civil engineer and submitted for approval and review and approval by the county public works director. So that's. How that is satisfied. So. This evidence is all what was relied upon in the planning commission's approval of the subdivision. The applicant requests that you also reply rely upon this evidence in the record and re approve the re approve the application dismissing the appeal. That's the end of my testimony. I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have at this time, and I'd like to reserve the right to respond to any additional testimony received here today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
I don't have any.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Is there any testimony in support of the application? If you're online, raise your hand. Seeing none. Now we'll go to the appellant's case. Is there anybody here representing as the appellant? Come on up. Name an address, please. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Corey Rich and address is nine twenty four Southwest Fellow Street here in McMinnville. It's Steve Macy. We're representing Evergreen Memorial Park and we have appealed the planning commission's decision for this development. Main reasons, as were stated before, is has to do with the the drainage. I understand that the approval is they're going to have to submit a drainage plan showing that no natural drainage is disturbed by the development. We believe that the natural drainage is already disturbed by the development through the artificial elevation of the property. And then when they pave this over. That water is going to run right into our cemetery. I brought a few pictures in that we had presented to the. Planning Commission. Do you want to take these? Just made two copies of them showing the plotted cemetery. Steve will bring those up. The. The cemetery map shows the plotted cemetery. Then there's an aerial picture that shows where that plotted cemetery. Is showing in the upper right hand corner of that cemetery plot map, you can see where the county commissioner signed off on the cemetery in nineteen thirty seven. It is not farmland. It's actually plotted cemetery. You can see in the aerial photo also, the cemetery, as is plotted right now, is almost full. We have maybe four years left of burials before we will be burying in the plotted cemetery that is right where the water is going to drain off of the applicant's property. The thirteen acres property that's going to be developed on an average year, McMinnville gets thirty seven inches of rain. That thirty seven inches over thirteen acres is over thirteen million gallons of water. I submitted paperwork for a rainfall calculator before. The same website I got that from. Natural land fifty to seventy percent of the rainfall is absorbed into the ground. It does not runoff. Once this property is developed with buildings and paved, none of that water is going to be absorbed into the ground. That's all going to flow directly into Evergreen Memorial Park Cemetery. That's the natural way that it's going to flow, but there's nothing natural about it, being that they've elevated the ground and they're going to pave it over. That's the basis of of our appeal.
Anything to add? No, my questions are actually going to be a follow up for the applicant, so.
My question is, is one of the conditions is prior to final plot approval, the applicant shall submit a drainage plan showing no natural drainage disturbed by any development. Does that does that answer your concerns?
Yeah, well, we believe that the natural drainage is is already disturbed. They've already elevated that property. Their their original application, they submitted that they were going to run all the water towards Lone Oak Road. The reason they thought the water was all running towards Lone Oak Road is because for fifty years they've been dumping material on these this thirteen acres. And they've pushed it all towards Evergreen, so it sits fifteen feet higher. They believed that the water was going to run towards Lone Oak Road. Naturally, it's going to run towards the river with fifty to seventy percent of that thirteen million gallons of water a year being absorbed into the ground. That's not going to happen anymore. So, I mean, I understand that the drainage is going to come into the cemetery, but. It's all going to come into the cemetery now.
But it sounds like it has to be approved for it not to run onto your property. So whatever system they come up with will need to be approved based on those parameters. So what's the concern?
Where's it going to run?
I don't know. I'm assuming some system that they're going to set up that would keep it from coming onto your property like it was said to be.
Yeah, but I mean, in here, it just says the natural drainage. It doesn't say that it's. I mean, if.
Right, but I think that's the understanding, though, and that's why they're going to develop a system to keep it from draining onto your guys' property is my understanding, anyway.
It's to be approved by our public works director.
Okay.
And also, you'd also understand, this is in an average year, it's thirty two million gallons. Wait, not thirteen million, thirteen million. We have. Years that it's much more. And cemetery runs all year long. You know, we don't close it because it's high water. And it's my feeling that a big drainage pipe, big huge drainage pipe, has to go under the cemetery property towards the river. So it's not drained into the cemetery. All of this water eventually, even if they hold some back underground, is going to go towards the river. And that's through our property. So. It's an awful lot of water. And we won't be able to operate that cemetery when it's when you can't even walk through it. That valley that we you see, the area that you see that's. Doesn't show graves on it is all plotted now. And yeah, and right down through the middle there, that line goes like this. So the water is naturally going to drain right through the middle of the new area, which is the new area of the cemetery, although it has been plotted for a hundred years. So we we can't have. I don't know how they're going to hold back all that water. What are they going to live when they do release it? Where's it going to go?
But that's what a registered engineer would have to figure out because that's above our pay grade, but that is a requirement.
Right, it's a requirement. So I don't understand. I guess we're arguing about whether their system is going to, you're talking about natural drainage, which they're going to add a system to keep the natural drainage from coming on your property. My question for you now, as it sits now, does the water back up as it comes up to that fill from the cemetery onto that property?
Some some of it drains in now.
Because along that, along the area where our property meets their property, the rocks have been built.
Yeah, I've seen it. Yeah.
You've seen it. They're up like fifteen feet tall. Well, the rain now comes on top of those rocks and just comes down into the cemetery at the present time. And so there is. Some damage there. We can't have any graves in that area because it just bounds off and it doesn't naturally soak into the ground. So we we do that, but we but that's not anywhere near. The amount, a lot of the water in that development at this time soaks into the ground in between those rubble piles. It all soaks into the ground.
I think I can, at least for me, that I agree that there needs to be a system in place, which is how this reads, to keep water runoff from coming onto your property. And if it doesn't, then they do not get approved. So I I guess I don't. I know that you're concerned that maybe they're not going to follow through with that, but if they don't, then they don't get the approval for it, so.
Well, we think it needs to be done all at once, too, for all these areas. So the drains in, the drains are all in. They're all done. Not just one development starts up here and still all this rubble. Then another block is developed, then another lot's developed, and it gets worse and worse, the amount of water that comes down.
Where where does it state that the water is not going to drain onto our property?
It's condition three, from what I'm reading.
That just says that it submit a drainage plan showing that no natural drainage is disturbed by any development.
And it has to be submitted and approved and prepared by a registered engineer. Ken Friday, do you want to jump in here?
I'm a registered engineer and submitted to and approved by the county public works director.
Okay.
It is. So obviously, the concern is today, but is your concern more the site designer reviews that would happen in the future to develop each one of those lots?
What our concern is, is that the thing is going to be completely covered. That's the plan. Eventually, someday, all those lots are going to be developed. They're going to have buildings and all the water that used to drain into the ground is now going to head towards the cemetery. Millions of gallons of water. Engineers are saying they're going to figure out something to hold that in. But whatever they release comes down into the cemetery. And I think it's the county's responsibility. That when you put, when you have a new development to come in, you make damn sure that you don't hurt neighbor businesses. Especially the cemetery that's been there a hundred years and especially all the new developments that.
Yeah, and we agree.
Absolutely.
We agree.
So we we're, I want you to make sure that you understand what we're talking about, where the water goes, where it's going to go a lot more once it's all covered.
I don't think we agree on that part, but we do agree on the basis that they should not drain onto your property.
We got that, that's all we need from you.
Okay.
I still don't think it says that. It says it's just.
Well, we're going to do a follow up, so we'll 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 find out here in about five minutes.
Yeah. I think from what I've read, too, there's language in here about a berm.
Yeah, thank you.
Also, you've been listening. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
There's language in there about maybe a berm as well that would block water. I think that they're, you know, I think we. Sure, and the catch basins and so on to get it out towards the road, I would imagine is the plan, but I'm not an engineer, so.
We'll get to the bottom of it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Which. To. Is there any other testimony in opposition to the application? If you're online, raise your hand. Seeing none. Public agency reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our office received response from the building department stating they had no concerns or objections. ODOT also responded to the referral and had no comments, but requested that the county provide notice of the decision to their office, which we did when the planning commission approved it and will again pending the board's decision. The county sanitarian initially submitted two responses into the record that expressed concern regarding the proposed wastewater treatment plan proposed by the applicant. The sanitarian felt initially that the septic plans indicated the system would need to be approved as a community septic system. However, the sanitarian dropped his concern after reviewing the applicant's proposed wastewater management plan that was submitted on March twenty sixth. The revised septic plan indicates that each lot would have a tank installed with a separate drain line, serving each lot by septic easement, with drain lines being installed on tract A, which is identified on the applicant's proposed site plan. The sanitarian stated that the applicant will need to be, will need to demonstrate that easements of adequate size for drain fields and future repair drain field size for a hundred and fifty gallons per day can be accommodated by the approved area and that each easement must be staked out by a surveyor, along with the approved drain fields and repaired drain field locations. The sanitarian also noted that no caretaker dwellings or facilities would be approved due to the limited nature of the drain field areas available on the tract. Following the sanitarian's revised response, staff no longer felt that a goal eleven exception would be required. And that concludes public agency reports.
Thank you very much. A rebuttal by the applicant.
Chair Johnston, Commissioner Starrett and Commissioner King, thank you for your time. My name's Monty Hurley. I'm with A K S Engineering. I reside at one six three five zero Northwest Belt Road, Yamhill, Oregon nine seven one four eight. I'm a licensed professional engineer. I'm working on this project. I represent the town family. Stormwater will be managed as addressed in my letter that's in the record, sent to Lance Woods on May eighth, twenty twenty five, and condition of approval. Three of the land use decision specifically addressing Mr. Rich's appeal of the project. As the project is developed with impervious area, paving, et cetera. Stormwater will be collected. And routed to a stormwater detention pond or detention pipe. Where it will be detained and then metered out with orifices or wears to predevelop flow rates in historical drainage patterns. It's in compliance with county code. It's in compliance with standard engineering practices and it's in compliance with Oregon Drainage Law. I want to thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I do. Is this based on leaving the fill there?
Uh, the fill will be. Regraded, we will say, so there'll probably be some fill removed, some fill brought in, as you typically would see with a development while you're where you're putting pads and buildings and pavement for roads and so on. So there will be regrading that will occur. But with all of the impervious area where you're creating impervious area, you do have more runoff. There's no questions about that. That's where you do detention ponds and detention pipe to release then that stormwater at predeveloped flow rates. No different than when the cemetery develops that rest of the field that they're describing with plots and puts in paved roads and creates impervious area. They would be responsible or should be responsible for doing the same thing and doing detention on their site for that additional stormwater runoff that they're creating for their paved areas prior to releasing it downstream to the next property. This property sits upstream of the farm field that they're going to develop into those plots. I believe the nineteen thirty seven plot map. And there's property that sits downstream of that, so it's going to be handled the exact same way. That answer your question?
Kind of. So when you. When you mentioned state law about another piece of property allowing runoff onto it, is it based on the natural or what the original topography was?
Yes.
So if you're not going to remove it, then there could be issues. I mean, if you went down to the natural topography, then we probably wouldn't have this conversation. But if now we're having this conversation where you're going to create this drainage map based on whatever the fill is from zero to fifteen feet. But if you don't take it down to the natural, then. It should be, I would think, restricted or developed into a point where it does not run onto the neighbor's property based on you. You're now taking something that's not natural to that area.
Actually, the opposite. So and what I mean by the opposite is what you're describing is correct, but historically, pre nineteen seventies, this site drained westerly to the field where the. Where the plot plot is going to be. They raised it up. Fill over time since the nineteen seventies, and now it actually. The topography is jumpy because when you they filled in various spots, but now it actually drains more easterly to the state highway.
So where is your release of or your metered release going to be? Is it going to be over the cemetery or is it going to be more towards the Lone Oak Road?
So our plan is in either in either direction we release, we're going to do it to predeveloped rates. But is it predeveloped pre nineteen seventy or post nineteen seventy? I think is your question, and it's an appropriate one. Our plan is to go to the ODOT, and if they accept the drainage to the east, we will detain it to predevelop flow rates and we will drain it to the east. ODOT may not accept that drainage to the east because historically it drained to the west to towards the cemetery's field. If they do not accept it, we will do detention to predeveloped rates and we will drain it to the west. But either way, we're going to detain it and it'll be to predeveloped flow rates. And what I mean by predeveloped flow rates is. I don't know if it's described exactly right, but pretty close is when you have paved area, you're going to have more runoff, right? And so. You have to detain the difference between the more runoff and what the historical runoff was. If there was historically a field there, it still had runoff, just not as much. So you have to detain to that difference so your peak flow rates are no more than they were historically. And so. That answer your question?
Kind of, because I think a big hang up is is you producing more water off of unnatural fill that then would be forced to run over their property, which I would agree with. That is not right to do that. But if it's natural, I don't think that we have a whole lot to say about that. So if your number one goal is to go to. The Lone Oak Road direction and get approval from ODOT, then I would be okay with that.
That is number one, but I will say if ODOT says, which they look at historic drainage patterns prior to nineteen seventies, if ODOT does not accept that stormwater runoff after we do detention, we will take it the historic direction, which is to the west, but we will do detention in ponds and detention pipes to release that at no higher rate than it was pre nineteen seventies.
But is that release spot going to be one spot out of a two foot culvert in one area versus dispersed over the whole property like it is now? So are you consult your, it's going to get consolidated to the detention pond and one pipe out of that detention pond to meter it out? But now it's in one consolidated spot versus it slowly flowing to where they they they, I mean, they mentioned they can see it a little bit wet now, but that's that natural flow coming to there versus one consolidated spot.
Very familiar, deal with this on every land.
I'm not saying that you're not.
So what we will do is flow dispersion at the end of that discharge point to spread out that flow.
So.
That will be an engineered system and we do that on lots of projects because this issue comes up on lots of projects.
So if the if it ends up being, let's call it phase two, where ODOT doesn't give you approval and you have to drain over the neighbor's property in a in a confined area, and the neighbor was okay with it to bury bury a pipe on the property line to go to wherever that natural drainage spot is, instead of draining it on top of the property, would you guys be okay with that?
I think we'd be.
If they were okay with that?
I think we'd be okay with that. We'd obviously have to work out the details and I'm not going to speak for the property owner on that specific. I mean.
Sure.
But but that makes sense to me. I think we would be agreeable to either spreading the flow out through engineered means like we do on lots of projects or if an agreement can be reached to pipe it through that subject property following the historic drainage path. I think we could figure that out, right?
Okay. Questions?
Well, I have a question more for Ken. One of the suggested conditions would include a homeowners association to address the management of wells, drainage ditches, and in other words, be able to deal with anticipated repair and maintenance over the next thirty years. That wasn't in one of your conditions. So how will those drainage fields and and septic drain fields be managed?
At least the septic drain fields would be by the individual property owners, but if you want to put a condition like that on the approval, that that would be fine to have a homeowners association that or an owners association that would manage the list of items that you've mentioned.
I think it's just an extra measure of comfort for the. Appellant. I don't know. It's just a thought.
To be be clear, just these aren't residences, so they would be likely businesses and they will be subject to easements and maintenance agreements. Generally, that's privately, that's something the county doesn't necessarily need to get involved in. That's a private system, but I think we would be, we would be agreeable to something, you know. we would be we would be agreeable to something, you know, obviously, we're going to maintain our systems. And so there's got to be agreements between the lot owners as they develop to maintain those.
They have to stay compliant.
Okay, I'm just I'm just thinking in terms of how we could sort of soften the the impact if there's an at least a perceived impact.
I'm sure.
I think like you're saying, I'm concerned that it is a two or larger inch pipe all going right on to the cemetery's plots and affecting their ability to do future business that that does that part does concern me of ODOT pre seventies or post seventies and that's that part's a hard pill for me to to get around and I would much rather see a lot more water dispersed throughout the entire property rather than just coming out into one spot. But so it doesn't affect their business. And I don't know what their future plans are for that drainage area. Natural drainage area. Anyway, I would imagine that that's kind of naturally muddy all year round anyway, but if you're going to put all of that water where like Commissioner Chair Johnston was saying into one spot rather than it trickling through the entire property, whatever amount of footage that is that that creates a lot of erosion, potential erosion for their property. So that would be my concern.
Understood. Fair concern. The reason for that, though, is to provide the detention, right? So to provide the volume to lower the flow rate down. And then the engineering solution is and is to spread it out as much as you possibly can coming out of that pond with a level flow spreader or other engineered method. But you're not going to spread it out evenly across the entire length of the property. That's a fair assessment. Because there would be no way to do detention first, right? Because you have to you have to have volume so that your pond volume or your detention pipe volume can go up to mitigate those flows down to predeveloped rates. And then you have a discharge point, you spread it out as best you can down the natural drainage path. And so that's the engineering that needs to be done to comply with Oregon drainage law.
That discharge comes from one pipe or does it come from several pipes?
Typically, it would come from.
The footage of the property.
One pipe, but then be spread out. And how you spread that out, what I mean by that is think of a concrete wear or something like that. So your discharge from your pipe hits the concrete wear and then spreads out like a level spreader as to to so that's not all one point discharge.
How many feet is it to the next tributary if you had to go through the neighbor's property? Roughly, do you know?
Um, yeah, it depends on probably what you'd consider a tributary, but it across their field.
The next spot by law that you could, I guess, dump into a drainage ditch that wouldn't affect somebody's you know, farm ground or.
Follow up to that, can you do it without disturbing graves? I mean, we're not talking about a like, will you have to go over here to do that as well, right? Where there's already.
Uh, well, I'm just thinking if you go across the width of that uh farm field. Is it a thousand feet or more before you get past the edge of the farm field and you get down into the the drainage that's further to the west? And that's just estimating a number.
Sure.
I didn't look at how far it was across the field to kind of where that tributary becomes more defined.
Okay. All right. Any further questions?
So.
None. Uh, Ken, I will, I don't know. Can I do follow up questions with the appellant? Okay. Um, we have no other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome back. Thank you.
I should say that sure, you can do follow up questions, but the applicant does get.
Sure.
Final. Yes.
Totally fine. Uh, so question, if ODOT doesn't approve the discharge away from your property and um the outlet for the detention pond ends up being on your side of the property. Would you allow them to bury a pipe on your property? Either follow a property line or go deep enough to be below graves that would be dug, I guess. Uh, but would you allow some form of that across your property?
We we.
To get the drainage to get rid of the surface drainage from this property on to yours, bury it all and get it to the next tributary. Okay.
And we we own all the property to the uh to the highway. Going to Carlton.
Yeah.
It's to the west. Yeah, all that property.
Right.
And there's water now that drains from a pond towards Carlton. You've seen it on the side of the road. And that drains down across across the highway in a big pipe.
Okay.
And it could be dispersed that way.
Yeah, under under the highway down to the river.
Okay.
Under the highway down to the river.
But as the property drops, I'm assuming it drops towards the highway forty seven direction and through the cemetery. Would you be okay if they followed to the next natural tributary?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
What one thing is the amount of water that's going to be come down. You you know, just if you have a football field and it just takes the water. And you put a big building over the top of that thing, that water runoff runs up and then so against the ground.
Yeah.
So this is going to be a tremendous amount of additional drainage. And they're going to have to flow it leave the floor it out a little bit at a time.
Yeah, I've drained hundreds of acres of farm ground, so I I think we can make this work.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A follow up question for you guys if you come on up, which I think you know what's coming. So I guess for me to make me feel better about this is if you guys are okay with it and the neighbors are have said they're okay with it to uh any detention pond uh release would be stay underground, not released on top of the ground through their property in some fashion to the next tributary. If you can't get the approval from ODOT to go the other direction, would you guys be okay with that?
So uh, to summarize, we will look at going to ODOT first. We can't go to ODOT, we will do a detention pond to predeveloped rates. The ask is would we be willing to pipe it underground through the farm field? And I guess I don't think I can commit to that a hundred percent because I don't know the costs and I don't know the details and it's not designed. What I will say is it's certainly a possibility, makes a lot of sense, but I can't commit to that in this hearing.
Okay.
I can commit to we'll follow Oregon drainage law. We'll work with the county public works director to get an approvable plan. And we're either going to spread it out as best we can, or we'll figure out some way to pipe it through if if the property owner is agreeable and our client, the property owner is agreeable.
Right.
But I can't tell you a hundred percent just because we don't know the cost on that. I don't have it designed. I don't know the easement situation.
Ken, can we delay this until they do figure out an answer to that question?
Yes, we do have time before the hundred and fifty days, but we can't delay it too long.
Okay.
So if you're wanting to continue it for a week.
How much time do you think you need to get a cost estimate on that and to get us a yes or no answer?
I don't know if that can be done that easily.
How much time do you need?
I don't know that can be done in the amount of time we have that we're talking about.
I I will say that any future development has to still go through another application or more likely applications. So each each subsequent request has to go through a site design review. And right now, really what we're approving would be the putting the lines down on the property. Putting the driveways in and we're really not and putting in parts of the the drainage system to comply with putting in those those things. So we're not talking about putting down asphalt at this point. But in the future, we will, and that might be a question or an indicator.
Or or a very, I guess, be forewarned that at least the makeup of this. At least for me, my biggest concern would be because if this was all natural, then there probably would be no argument, at least for me. But now that there's natural fill there and not understanding the complete topography of this, it now puts it into a a concern that you've changed the topography of it in a non-natural state. So I guess be aware that as we progress through this, that that could be an issue as you get to approvals further on. So that's at least where I'm coming from.
Well, I think it's another sort of fail safe layer of protection. But this is, yeah, preliminary.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff recommendations?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This request is to subdivide property. During the planning commission hearing process, the applicant submitted a revision revision to their application to lower the number of lots from twelve to nine. I want to note that in processing a subdivision application, we are required to look at issues like road access, septic service, lot dimensions and similar items. This type of application allows the division of property, but it does not allow the development of this property. In this zone, after a subdivision lot is created, any proposed development is required to go through a site design review process, which reviews its development in greater detail. Based on the information in the record, staff finds that the request for a nine lot subdivision complies with the zoning and land division ordinance standards and recommends approval with the conditions noted in the staff report.
Excuse me, Lance. It mentions here eight lot subdivisions.
They have a what they call a tract A, which is um the parcel, and I'm going to put in quotes parcel that's used for the septic system.
Okay.
And so technically, we see it as they're actually developing uh nine lots, but really only eight of them will actually go through a development in the future.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. All right. We're going to close this public hearing at eleven nineteen. And open it up to any questions from us. Commissioner King?
I think most of my questions been answered.
Commissioner Starrett?
I would be ready to make a motion.
Okay. Uh, my biggest concern is, and I wanted to see if we are, we have a consensus that we're concerned about any drainage issues because of the fill going over the neighboring property. Are we kind of in an agreement on that? So if we are part of the motion, I would like to make just to make sure that we that the board that is one of their concerns about water runoff going over the neighbor's property and that needs to be addressed for any further development that comes along. So I would make a motion to approve staff recommendations. Also noting the concern with runoff. Any further discussion?
Like, just to echo that, that that's the concern there for sure.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
And and are we going to have findings coming back in two or three weeks? And I should have asked this earlier of AKS, but whether AKS wants to assist with developing the findings for approval? I probably come up, yeah. Just because he got a microphone then.
Yeah, sure. We'd be happy to do that. Cool. Okay, no more than three weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Back to our regular scheduled hearing. Uh, we have announcements. Commissioner King?
Yeah, thank you. I got a chance through public outreach of the Yam Hill River keepers cleanup. I don't know what they're calling themselves yet, but a property owner had reached out on the Yam Hill River and about potentially donating some of their property for a park. I need to follow up with you, Ken, on some of these questions that I have there. I went out with some of the riverkeeper folks and a counselor, city counselor for Sheridan. Really a pristine, beautiful piece of the Yam Hill one is left. And so I was happy to hear that some of their outreach is actually working and that there's engagement there. The potential of a of a park, open spaces for public use, I think, is something that I'm very excited about. I got a chance to attend the hearing on TLT, reading of the bill on the representative side and you know, something that AOC was pushing for some and just over time. It died in the in the in committee, I guess, back to committee, but it's not going forward, but it's just something that I'm was paying attention to both through TLT and just my work through or through AOC and my work with the tourism community here. Sat down with Shepard and his brother, I guess is what you'd call him, a shepherd. Naked grazing is their company. They graze under vine. Under vineyards mostly, and they're looking at potentially buying the old day meatpacking to kind of close that loop. It is a huge bottleneck, if you will, of in the industry just as being you know, I on a small scale raised animals for a lot of years and that was always the hard part is getting that date. Sometimes you need one a year in advance at this point. Seldomly are your animals a year old before you kill them. So I I'm excited for their little journey and findings. They're doing due diligence now. But a long road ahead of them, USDA and so on. Got a chance to sit down with the presiding judge, Judge Wiles, and talked about just some kind of common interest we have, goals of keeping up on our drug courts and juvenile and, you know, hearing from his side of the court side of of just all of our resources and you know, the need for another courtroom like this room here. So it was good to sit and chat with him. Headed to AOC to to County College today, so I'll miss the Carlton Days Parade. I'm hoping to make it back in time for our fair here. And I'd love a chance to, you know, go to some of these parades with you guys if if schedules permit. And then the the last bit is the last few weeks, just spending, you know, a lot of time paying attention to some of the the ICE presence in our community and, you know, trying to really pay attention to what's being said just about our neighbors and the language that's there. You know, with both some, you know, criminals and not criminals being detained, it just, you know, that a lot of that misinformation being spread around is that, you know, as elective officials, it's really hard to pay attention to and and really get the facts straight. So I've been trying to help with that. And, you know, them being a really big piece of our economy, that has been something that I paid attention to and had a lot of people reach out, business owners and so on of all walks of life, all businesses. All types of businesses being affected from manufacturing to farming to restaurants and so on. So yeah, like I said, I headed to County College as soon as we wrap this up.
Commissioner Starrett?
CCO executive meeting. We finalized some goals for fiscal year twenty twenty six. Looked at workforce development with high schools and the funding forecast going forward, which is going to be important. With Housing Authority, we approved the capital and operating budgets this week for fiscal year twenty twenty six. The Stratus project is ahead of schedule. And a couple of things in terms of the the foreclosed properties, the Ford Street property is moving ahead because they had a lot line adjustment issue. And we also had the church street property. We had an occupant in there. And I have to say, the Housing Authority has been so hands on in helping this occupant move to a a location that is is going to be more appropriate for this person and helping with furniture and things like that. One of the other things about our Housing Authority, which I have to say, is the One of the other things about our housing authority, which I have to say is the compassion. They are sending fourteen kids from our housing authority properties to Camp Rosenbaum. This is a camp that's been in, in existence for fifty years, Brigadier General um, with the uh, the Oregon National Guard, who was a Holocaust survivor and a housing authority of Portland chairman. And he established this camp and it brings together military, law enforcement and firemen and, and all kinds of housing authority staff to teach kids who are living in housing authority properties who have never had the opportunity to be near a horse or to sit around a campfire. And it is, it is really quite impressive. So they pay for that because the families can't afford it. Sheridan hometown days was amazing. I'll let you talk about that chair. It was cold and rainy. But I have to say that the community came out and it was, was, it was very impressive. The Reach Northwest is going to be doing a day camp for foster kids coming up uh, next week. Sheriff Elliott pointed out that fire season is effectively um, has begun and the uh, High Heaven Gate has been closed. And that was a big process that we went through with our former board. So I want to thank a former chair, first hour for shepherding that, that was a, that was a difficult one, but it was secured on the twenty third. Also, the House passed the bill repealing the flawed wildfire, fire maps that we were in such opposition. Unfortunately, Senate Bill nine sixteen passed, which is uh, providing uh, for unemployment insurance benefits for the striking workers and that is going to be, uh, it's, that's going to be a game changer budget wise for us and not in a good way. Some of the gun bills moving forward, which are going to make uh, many of us in this room felons. And I just want to say that whatever the Republican, um, Republicans in the House and Senate can do to keep this from happening, whatever it takes. A lot of these, there's a lot on the line with the bills that are, are being presented this session, which I've never seen anything quite as radical in, in the, in the fifty years I've, fifty, forty years I've been here. Chair?
Thank you. Uh, yeah, been a busy couple of weeks. When you don't get an update in between, we had uh, last Thursday off. Um, so I'm going to go all the way back to last uh, Monday, the sixteenth. Um, Newburgh City Council meeting, uh, they discussed a few CET grants and uh, approved their supplemental budget, which I think was the number three one. Um, they also uh, were discussing um, their spark project that they got going on down there. Uh, Tuesday was cog board meeting finalizing the budget. They, uh, we did improve, approve a ten percent increase, which was kind of middle of the road increase where there was proposals for six, ten, and I think it was a sixteen or eighteen percent. So we went down the middle of the road. That's not going to quite cover, uh, recoup the actual costs uh, that cog provides to the smaller cities or even the counties and services that they do. But it's going to get us closer and we're going to readdress it by the time we get to December, just keep a close eye on it, depending on what kind of federal funding comes in. Um, Dundee City Council had their meeting and the theme is about budgets. And you'll hear that as I go into the rest of the city council meetings. Um, Wednesday was cog legislation meeting where uh, they updated a bill, uh, updated us on where all the bills are in progress, which is worthless for me to even tell you where that's at because a week ago is way different from where we're at today. So um, if you ever need any information on that, it's pretty cohesive uh, picture that you can get when you go on OLS um, and get any updates that you need. Uh, Parkway Committee met last Thursday morning. Um, it was a, they weren't going to do it because there wasn't a lot to talk about, but um, I agree with Dave Hagerberg. If you don't do a meeting, sometimes you start losing participation. So we did the meeting and we actually ended up talking for about thirty five, forty minutes. Uh, Senator Starr showed up, uh, uh, Rep uh, Scharf showed up and made for great conversation to know kind of the inner workings or behind the scenes on what direction we're going with the the transportation package uh, or House Bill twenty twenty five. Lot of, lot of, lot of concerning conversations with all the tax increases uh, that they're doing to try to fund that. Um, and update on uh, funding for McDougal Corner. We are, when we did the CPRD County Dinner, um, um, our federal representatives for Merkley, uh, Wyden and uh, Andrew Salinas's office were all there. And um, Gustavo did update us on that they're all working collaborative together for this five million that is now at Salinas's office to be targeted at the McDougal interchange. So that was very, very promising. It's not approved yet, but it's uh, to get support from all three of those offices for this five million dollar project is phenomenal. And to not like cut the funding and go put it into other asks from different communities. So uh, that's very, very promising. It's not done yet, but uh, a definitely good direction we're headed on that. Uh, Thursday also was the fair, Thursday night was the fair board meeting. Uh, went all over a lot of details about the fair coming up real quick here, July thirtieth to August second. Um, love how that fair board's uh, really digging in. Um, we expanded it. If you don't remember, I think almost a year ago now from, or maybe not quite a year ago, from five to seven. Best thing ever. It's more hands on deck. Uh, everybody's getting super involved. They all, all have their own uh, inner liaison duties with uh, each different kind of aspect to the fair, whether it's the youth livestock auction, four H. Um, and so there's the number one really issue that we've always had every year was like communication. And now that communication channel is there because we have liaisons that uh, do outreach to them. So it's been great. Um, this Tuesday was MAC City Council, uh, had a lot of supporters in the room, given public comment to get the uh, rec center onto the ballot. Um, and they also again, uh, approved their uh, budget. Um, Sheridan also approved their budget. Uh, this Wednesday, yesterday, uh, we did a site visit uh, with uh, Pure Light Botanical and Caitlin. That was pretty phenomenal. She is going to go places. She absolutely loves what she does. You can tell the passion that's there. Um, it was pretty cool. So that was a, a twenty five thousand dollar grant that the uh, BOC approved for her uh, to help her with her business seeing, business and marketing. Um, she does uh, all natural beauty products or tries to stay natural or something. Commissioner Stewart might, there you go. Very nice. Um, I thought that was fantastic and just huge shout out to Joya. It's one thing to have a conversation with Joya, I'm liaison for economic development. It's one thing to have a conversation, be like, hey, what are you doing? Do you need, you know, assistance with anything or what do you got going on? They, they up shake she gives us, but it's another thing to actually hear it from the businesses in, in the community of how her, whether it's her newsletter or that she, uh, somebody sends an email and she's very responsive to it, or she picks up the phone and just answers all the questions that these guys need to go to the next steps uh, to, to keep their business moving forward. And it's absolutely phenomenal. And she's even gonna, I can't remember the name of the TV show that she's going to go on.
Today Show.
What is it?
The Today Show, right?
No.
No, I don't think it's Today Show. Yeah, Joya was on the Today Show. Um, anyway, Joya will keep us uh, up to date on how that goes, but she's supposed to do product pitch, I guess, for her company uh, on this national televised show. So that's going to be
Five employees.
Yep, five employees. All, all, so women own, women ran, I believe, uh, is, is what she's trying to stick with. And uh, she's a single mom, uh, got really passionate when she uh, uh, her vision for her company that she's striving to expand and build. One of the biggest things was the childcare, the in, in, in business childcare. And man, she got emotional about that. So anyway, she loves that business and she's going to go places. Um, just coming up, I got chat with the chair next week, just as a reminder, that's Thursday, uh, six PM at the Amhill County Campus Building. Speaking of the campus building, HR is officially moved as of yesterday at noon? Okay, cool. So HR's over there, first floor, first left. So just as you come in the main, you'll see Patricia there with uh, all of her staff and McKay Lee and everybody else. Um, and speaking of departments moving, the next one up is going to be finance. And hopefully within the next two weeks. We're shooting for two weeks to get finance move. Uh, they have stuff boxed up, so they want to go. They're okay, in between payrolls. Yeah. Yeah. All stuff going on. That's the goal is two weeks. Um, we're in the permitting process right now to hang signs finally on the building. Um, it's, I think everybody will be very impressed with it. Um, I saw some of the renditions and we will redo down below by the street. Um, and actually get some low county logos down there, but it, it's coming next thirty days, maybe a little longer, depending on what City of McMinnville does. We got a city counselor here too, yeah. He can relay message and tie it to his finger. Cool. Um, and just, let's see, last thing is going to be the youth safety town hall in the city of Lafayette at their fire station, July tenth. And uh, this is an effort between the mayor and our sheriff's department. So everybody go show up, show support. Uh, yeah, Sheridan hometown days, I don't know, it's, I think the rain held off just long enough not to make it miserable, but um, it was awesome. Just driving through there and seeing everybody that, you know, supports you and cheering and handing out candy and just made for a, made for a great day.
It was great, except the part where somebody came up to my car and asked if this was the senior court's car.
Oh, man.
I said, no, thank you very much. Ouch.
Dang.
But it was great because we saw people, no matter what, and it was chilly.
Yep.
But it was great.
Mountain posse's out there, fire department was out there, the youth programs.
Yep. The fair ambassadors.
Fair ambassadors, they
Looking good.
Yeah. Yeah. We have, so fair ambassadors got approved uh, to ride their horses. So we have two that ride horses now. One only showed up for Sheridan, but it sure does show well to have kind of that mix of kids there. And a huge support again, I know I've given them a shout out before, but huge support from the rodeo committee now. Uh, handing out county, uh, candy, handing out flyers. It's just a lot of hands on deck and it sure does help a lot for advertising that fair. So that's all I got. Closing her out at eleven thirty nine. Thank you very much. Sorry you guys had to sit through.